Good afternoon. We are going to call today's meeting to order. I would like to invite our guest, President Sofia Vargas, Student Council President at Moreland Road Elementary School.
Evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to today's meeting. My name is Sofia Vargas and I am the President at Moreland Road Elementary. Without further hesitation, let's begin. I'm going to call this meeting to order.
All right. We will have our pledge allegiance by Sofia.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That is my prayer. Father Lord, we just thank you for this day, the opportunity to come and do the business and hear the presentation by the Lord about Griffin Spalding County. But we are so grateful and thankful for all of the families, Lord, that have been spared throughout this whole season of storms that we've dealt with. Thank you, Father Lord, that you will continue, Father Lord, to bring comfort for those that have lost, that you will, or bring provision for those that are in need. And thank you for that this day.
Let's go to the adoption of the agenda. The order of business we are taking up now is the adoption of the agenda. On your agenda, it is item number three. At this time, what is the pleasure of this body? Thank you so much for that motion, Mr. Holmes.
Second.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Holmes and Dos, we are ready to call for the vote. The Chairman and Voucher is privileged to do a roll call vote. When your name is called, please respond. McDonald.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Dos.
Yes.
Brown. Let the record reflect that Ms. Cook is not here tonight. The adoption of the agenda has been approved four zero, receiving majority vote and is therefore passed. Our announcements will go over to Ms. McDonald.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Announcements for February. February is Black History Month. It was always a fun thing to do when I was still teaching. February is National Career and Technical Education Month. This week, February 6th through 10th is National School Counselor Week. Thank you, Ms. Long, for everything you do for us and those of, those under you that do what they need to do for our families and our students. February 13th through 17th is National FCC LA Week. February 20th through 24th, the Griffin Spalding County School System Presidents' Day, holiday and winter break. Yippee! And then February 22nd is School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. Without them, none of us would be here today. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you so much for that report. Ms. McDonald, we're now moving to item five, the Consent Agenda. The order of business that we are taking up now is Consent Agenda. It is item number five. At this time, what is the pleasure of this body for the Consent Agenda?
Motion, we accept Consent Agenda at first.
It's been properly motioned by Holmes.
Second.
It's been seconded by McDonald. We are ready to call for the vote. McDonald.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yay.
Dos.
Yes.
Brown. Yes. The Consent Agenda has been approved four zero, receiving a board majority vote and is therefore passed. Presentations and discussions. First up, Policy FDC, naming facilities. First reading, Mr. Bruce, all about the buildings, Ballard.
Good afternoon, Board Members and Dr. Simmons.
Good afternoon.
Here this afternoon to present to you the provisions, the policy regulations for Policy FDC, naming facilities, and putting that on for first reading. We're moving forward with the policies as we have been recently. And at this time, revisions are suggested in the policy to remove regulatory language. The language will become the regulation for Policy FDC. This is the first time this was reviewed since 2011, so we did look it over. Everything appeared to be in good order except for the regulation portion. So as of now, the next steps are for the district will post Policy FDC, naming facilities on assembly to receive input from the board members and stakeholders for 30 days. Afterwards, the policy will be brought back to the board for second reading, approval and final adoption.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ballard. Board Members, are there any questions for Mr. Ballard?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dos, you're recognized.
Mr. Ballard, the regulation, I know that we, our document was scratched, are going to be moved to a regulation. Was there going to be any changes to that or was it just going to be identical?
No, sir. We're just moving it to a regulation and leaving it like it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any other board members that have a question for Mr. Ballard? Hearing none, thank you so much, Mr. Ballard. Next up, Policy IBB, charter schools, Dr. Donald Warren.
Good afternoon, Board Members.
Good afternoon, sir.
Want to present to you our policy IBB as it relates to charter schools for first reading. We reviewed this policy and at this time, there are no suggestions, suggested revisions to policy IBB for charter schools.
Thank you so much, Dr. Warren. Ladies and gentlemen of the body, have you, do you have any questions for Dr. Warren relating Policy IBB?
Yeah. I have one, I just, out of curiosity.
Go ahead, Leader Holmes.
Thank you, sir. Out of curiosity, I know it went, you know, it kind of fluctuate. Have we had any kind of activities, interests, you know, in doing this? I know we, Future Row was the last of the, I guess, Mohicans. And have we had anything locally or any interest internally?
No, sir. We have not in about two years. I believe during the time I was the interim superintendent.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing none, thank you so much. Dr. Warren, you're still up for Policy KJ, advertising in schools.
Yes, sir. We reviewed Policy KG, KJ, advertising in schools, presented for first reading. And we have some suggestions to include removing some of the regulatory language to make it a regulation and streamlining our policy for advertising in schools.
All right. Thank you so much. Are there any questions as it relates to advertising in schools? Policy KJ? Hearing none. Thank you so much, Dr. Warren. Next up, Policy ADDD, gifted student program, Dr. Tiffany Taylor.
Good afternoon, Board Members, Superintendent Simmons.
Good afternoon.
At this time, I am bringing forward Policy ADDD, gifted students programs. And at this time, there are no recommendations for revisions.
All right. Thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen of the body, we've heard the presentation from Dr. Taylor. Is there any discussion or questions for Dr. Taylor? Hearing none. Thank you so much. Next up, Policy EED, vending machines. First reading, Mr. Robert Wow Wow Yippee Yo Yippee A Wheeler.
Good afternoon, Board Members, Dr. Simmons.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The district is presenting Policy EED, vending machines for first reading. At this time, the district, at this time, revisions are suggested in the policy to remove regulatory language. As a result, the Policy EED will be deleted and written into regulation for vending machines that will be attached to Policy EEE.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wheeler, for the presentation. Board Members, are there any questions?
Yeah. One quick one.
All right. Mr. Dos, you are now recognized.
Will there be time, if there's changes made to the regulation, will that be brought back before the board for us to be able to see that?
Yes.
Okay. So pretty much, any regulation and any policy will always come before the board before, you know, finally is adopted. Are there any other questions? All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Wheeler. Hearts that are loyal and hearts that are true. By merit and culture, she strives as she does. Mental health supports, students, staff and families, Dr. McElroy.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Board Member, Superintendent Simmons. At this time, I bring to you mental health supports for students, staff and families. Our vision is distinctive brand, strong leaders, great schools. Our mission is to power each student to graduate college and career-ready. Our non-negotiables, be professional, be accountable and communicate effectively. Here's our roadmap to success. And you will see this presentation fall into present a safe and supportive learning environment, align resources to student and staff needs, cultivate a committed workforce and address the diverse needs of students and leverage business and community partnerships. When discussing mental health, educators often focus on students that have intensive Here, we will look at strategies that are offered at tier one level that involve preventing behavioral and emotional problems by promoting positive relationships and teaching social emotional skills. Suicide and prevention training is provided to all certified staff. We utilize behavior and SEL universal screeners to identify students in need of additional support. And we also offer parent workshops that build knowledge and awareness around mental health and supports available in the school and in the community. We have trained staff to implement targeted interventions for students identified for additional support and how to respond to crisis. We also partner with community-based providers for students identified for needing intensive Behavioral universal screeners can be used to identify students with elevated internalizing and externalizing behaviors who may be at increased risk for mental health problems. You will be provided a copy of those screeners. Students exhibiting internalizing behaviors may exhibit anxiety, sadness, social withdrawal, fearfulness, avoidance, somatic complaints and depression. Students exhibiting externalizing behaviors may exhibit overactivity, poor impulse control, noncompliance, aggression, oppositionality, temper, defiance and outbursts. And here is our behavior screener results for fall 2019, was before the pandemic. But we have increase in the percentage of students identified as externalizing and internalizing levels from last school year. Next, we will look at how our social and emotional learning curriculum teaches critical social skills and competencies that are not only successful for students to be successful in school, but also in life. Social and emotional learning provides the structure and process for adults and students to develop fundamental emotional and social competencies, understanding and manage emotions, set and achieve positive goals, feel and show empathy for others, and establish and maintain positive relationships and make responsible decisions. In our middle schools and elementary schools, they utilize second step, which helps to transform schools into supportive, successful learning environments uniquely equipped to encourage children to thrive. Social emotional learning resources were also provided following our response to the tornadoes. Educators were provided strategies on how to support students. SEL activities were provided that allowed students to build relationships and be having a voice and build community. High schools utilize Character Strong. These lessons build character as well as teach critical and social skills to focus on the whole child. Our staff and school, we focus on adult SEL by sharing data regularly with our staff. We acknowledge our staff. There's different activities that are provided at the school level to meet the staff's SEL needs as well as focus on self-care. We continue to utilize the Google classrooms, thus an additional layer of support. We started the SEL Google classrooms in response to the pandemic. This is an additional resources that include activities, reflections, journals, videos and support form requests and resources. Here, you will see a fourth grade SEL lesson focusing on emotion management. The middle school students learn to explain the importance of emotions and describe how emotions can affect their thoughts and decisions. There's also a link from feedback from students when asked, what do they like about SEL? How has it benefited them? And what is the most important thing that they've learned? Students get to have discussions about their feelings and how, about the feelings of others. They also learn strategies to calm down, how to make a good decision, that it is good to express your feelings and not to bully others. Student mental health services that are provided. We have three mental health clinicians. Each clinician is assigned a cluster of schools. The support ranges from individual student and staff support to consultation and linkage services. District mental health clinicians also provide daily crisis prevention monitoring through analysis of the district risk and safety alert electronic systems. Our middle school, mental health school counselors also work collaboratively with district mental health clinicians to ensure adequate supports are being given to students that are identified. Our family education webinar series builds awareness and offers families strategies that can, they can use to support their child, honor everyone's experiences and build resilience and nurture self-care. We offer these sessions throughout the year. Each session is recorded and posted on the district website. As you can see from that link, some of the topics for our family education webinar series include promoting positive mental health for families, suicide prevention, bullying prevention, how to help improve your child's behavior and social emotional learning strategies at for home. We also offer youth and adult mental health first aid training available to families in the community at no charge. Here's our list of our community-based providers. We partner with them to provide intensive support to students following a crisis or for students needing ongoing therapy. Most of our students are seen by Grace Harbor, Health Connect and Rabbit Hole Farms. These providers see students individually and are able to service them in the school. To support behavior of our students with exceptionalities, we contracted with Marcus Autism Center to hire BCBA's. Each contracted BCBA can support up to 10 students, pre-K through 12, on a referral basis. Students are recommended for support through the DES Consolidated Request for Support and are reviewed by the Coordinator and Director prior to being assigned to a BCBA caseload. The BCBA provides weekly, bi-monthly or monthly support sessions to either provide a direct modeling or coaching to the student and/or the student service providers and case manager. Currently, 30 students identified for direct support at 15 schools and three BCBA's are working in the district to support those students with exceptionalities. To support increasing mental health needs, we contracted mental health services through Maxim Staffing to support elevated internalizing and externalizing behavior displayed by students. A mental health clinician provides mental health and wellness services that foster pro-social skills and appropriate behavior, early detection of child and adolescent mental health needs and build on current services provided at the school and provide greater access to mental health services for children in Griffin Spalding County schools. This services is going to be contracted through the end of the year and was approved January 24th Board Meeting. Each contracted mental health clinician can support up to 30 students on a referral basis. And where focused schools are our secondary schools. Students are recommended for support through the MTSS Request for Support and are reviewed by the Coordinator prior to being assigned to the contracted mental health clinician. These students are going to receive weekly support sessions in the schools. To address the mental health needs of our staff, we have a licensed counselor available to employees through State Anchored Counseling Services. The counselors are available by phone and for in-person sessions and provide workshops to employees. Individual counseling sessions are also available and are confidential. Employees and family members have access to the Employee Assistant Program offered through UNUM as part of the Employee Benefits Package. Employees do not have to be enrolled in the medical insurance to use this service and the service is available 24/7 and we regularly promote this option to our employees. CAPRO is an additional EAP service provided by the state. CAPRO has been founded since 1985 and has been providing EAP services to the state of Georgia since 2014. So these are some of the resources that are available to support adults and staff in our system. To address staff emotional support in response to the tornadoes, there was an offer for paid time off, which employees were given three days of leave time that was not deducted from their sick or personal leave days to deal with weather disaster-related matters. To date, only three employees have utilized all three days. This is intended to alleviate the emotional worries associated with paid or unpaid time off. There's also a weather disaster donation bank that is being established for employees who would like to donate days to support colleagues who have sustained significant weather-related damage to their homes and are faced with long-term displacement. Employees were also allowed to wear jeans for the remainder of the month of January to reduce stress management and coordinated clothing and outfits in preparation for work. This modified dress code received positive feedback. And lastly, we can all help prevent suicide. The 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline is a United States-based suicide prevention network of over 200 crisis centers and provides 24/7 service via a toll-free hotline with the number 988. It is available to anyone in suicidal crisis or emotional distress. Spread the word about the Lifeline's free 24/7 services and raise awareness for suicide prevention.
Ladies and gentlemen of the body, we have heard the presentation from Dr. McElroy. Are there any comments, questions or concerns? We're going to recognize Ms. McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Dr. McElroy, number one, thank you for, it's a lot of information. Could you go back to this for me? This slide? It's number seven, I think. I'm not really sure I understand. Obviously, I know what internalizing and externalizing means. I'm not really sure what the elevated column means and the slightly raised column means. Can you help me understand that, please?
Yeah. So based on the behavior screener results, we look at the percentage of students who have elevated levels and a percentage of students who have slightly raised. And we look at those, those levels in addition to other data points and we target those students for interventions at the school level prior to them going, moving up the tiers to need intensive interventions.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you. And then, I was curious on slide 14, the family, family education webinar series. Do we know how many families have maybe tried to look at some of the videos? Is there any number? Can, are we allowed to or even, do we have a way to see if it's being utilized? I guess that's what I'm trying to ask.
Yes. So it is Google Meet, so we do ask for feedback following the webinars and we also are able to see how many families are on there each time, so I can get that data for you.
Okay. Thank you. I was glad to see, too, the community partnerships, how many providers we have to help our staff and our students and our families. That's great. And I'm not real sure on page 16 what DES means. Students recommended for support through the DES? I probably know, but that's an acronym that is left in my brain.
Department of Sectional Services.
Okay. That's what I thought. Just wanted to be sure. And then on page 17, or especially high school students and even middle school students, are students, can a student just pick up the phone and call an 800 number and get help? Or do they have, always have to go through a counselor at their local school?
We do provide resources outside of the school setting that students have access to outside of the school hours, but we do also have a form that any student or even their parent or guardian or even a teacher can complete, you know, saying that if a student needs additional support. And it does go to our department with has mental health counselors and school clinicians as well as the school, we notify the school counselors as well.
Okay. So if, if Sue calls the 800 number outside of Griffin High School, then you would have an opportunity to see that Sue called?
If that's outside of our school system, we won't have access to that.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. And then I know the governor in his state, of the state address, mentioned $26, $27 million toward mental health services throughout the state. I believe, do you remember what he said? $27 million, $28 million?
Do not remember, Ms. McDonald, but if we could wrap up about another 30 seconds for questioning. Thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
I just want to say, thank you, Dr. McElroy, for the presentation. I also want to give a shout out to student services in their department. We met with FEMA a couple weeks ago. That's when we brought the therapy dogs in. And FEMA wanted to let our district know that we have handled the mental health piece and making sure that our employees and scholars and families get those services. And so just want to say thank you to Dr. Moore. Thank you to Dr. McElroy for your hard work in ensuring that that happens for our scholars and for our families. Thank you. Next up, coming from the highest of one hill in the formidable fifth, we want to welcome the principal from Jordan Hill, AKA Snoop Dottie, for a performance review update with Dr. Taylor.
All right. Good afternoon. And so I will be presenting with one of our fabulous principals today. The purpose of this presentation will be just to share with you how the central office supports schools in continuous improvement. And so you will hear how we communicate effectively and how we focus in on our areas of focus for literacy. You will hear a little bit of enrollment, attendant discipline and solving in order that our students are empowered to graduate college and career-ready. And so when we talk about our roadmap to success, this really gives us that plan that we follow continuously. So not just at the end of the year when it's time for budget planning or for our plans to be developed, but this is how we continuously focus on student achievement. So all roads lead to student achievement. So our continuous school improvement process includes a couple of steps and we are currently in the CNA process and that is where we're gathering our needs assessment. And at the district level, that is the review of the strategic plan, the roadmap to success as we call it, while at the same time, the schools are looking at their continuous school improvement plans. And that's why Ms. English is here. So she will share how alongside the district, how she has implemented her school improvement plan. And so then we'll get into talking about how we support the schools through the budget process, learning walks, performance reviews, and then additional support that we provide for our designated schools through monthly CIT review meetings. The last thing that I'll mention by way of support is that we have partnered with GLISI for two years now, where they provide for us a summer leadership conference in which we're able to refine our continuous school improvement plans and they support us with year-long consultancy. And so we have narrowed our focus down for non-negotiables for leading, teaching and learning into four areas. The first one is effective planning in the professional learning communities, focusing on effective instruction as we provide a solid instructional framework in all of our classrooms, focusing on high-yield instructional strategies such as questioning and summarizing as we try to get away from an over-reliance on computer programs. And then we sum that up with our continuous support for teachers through observation, feedback and professional learning. Here on this slide, you will see where when we go in to do classroom observations, be it at the district level or a principal, as you'll hear Ms. English share, that we're looking at all of the same elements. I've highlighted for you those non-negotiable practices. And so we have developed in collaboration with the teaching and learning department and some of our other leaders around the district, precise tools or indicators that we want to look at monthly. And you'll see here where we have over a thousand observations. That is not at the district level, but this is our way of having those consistent look fours that principals, assistant principals and coaches, and they go out to observe to see how we are implementing those best practices. So we have about 1,700 or so observations that we're reporting. And so I'll just focus your attention to the green bar that says the opening work session and or closing are not present. And only about 6% of our classrooms. So that lets us know from a verse, I view, that, that non-negotiable practice that I mentioned to you, that second bullet, the instructional framework is being implemented with fidelity. And so that is how we use some of those data points. I'll move forward. One of the areas, we talk about our approach to Orton-Gillingham, which is the foundational reading skills. And so we want to make sure that we are not only saying that we want our kids reading, writing, speaking and solving. writing, speaking, and solving daily on grade level, but we have a way to go out and observe for that. And so, based upon the observations that we have done just in that area, 322 observations, and 81% of the time, the foundational skills are being taught and aligned to the standards for that grade level. I'll highlight this blue bar, that is the use of those high-yield instructional strategies. So, again, I take you back to those non-negotiable practices. One of those is implementing high-yield instructional strategies. So, you see that we're doing pretty well in that area. 77% of the time, there is a high-yield instructional strategy that is being implemented. So, further, the district, we have a team of about eight people. The cabinet oftentimes gets to participate along with the executive officers and the principals of the school. So, we go out with a more focused team to use this observation tool, really to just check in on how are we doing as a district towards meeting the vision for instruction that we have. So, to date, we have completed 11 elementary walks and two of the middle schools. We had to reschedule two of the middle schools that are coming up due to inclement weather, and then we will be participating in the three high school walks soon. To date, we have 193 classroom observations from that district team, that again, gives us an opportunity to go out and inspect what we expect. So, at this time, Ms. English, she is going to come and share with you how this process has helped her to implement and support her continuous school improvement plan.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brown, or Chairman Brown, I should say, for that lovely introduction of calling me Snoop Dottie. I don't think I'm going to wrap today. Good afternoon, board members and Dr. Simmons. You heard Dr. Taylor talk about the SESEP process. So, the first thing that we went through to build our comprehensive school improvement plans is the district came up with their goals and objectives. You know that process that we went through. So, we want to align that as our school to how we do it, but then what we did is we drilled it down to our own school data. So, we review our data and we talk about what we can do as a school. And what you're looking at here is our balance scorecard. And what we use this for is to monitor our progress. We present this at a performance review, and at that performance review, we're able to talk about things that are strengths, areas of growth, ways we're addressing, any concerns or needs, but we're also able to ask for any additional support that we might need from the district at that time. Yes, please. For the second goal area, before I even get into anything else, I want to give a shout out to the staff at the Hill. We always say, "The Hill will." If you'll look up there where it says the number of teachers missing six or more days, our target was to have three, and as of right now, we had two for a school. That's huge with all the sickness and everything, so shout out to Jordan Hill for being at school, because what we know, yeah, you can clap for that, what we know is that the number one impact on student achievement is teachers, and so, teachers being present, that makes a huge difference for our students. So, our end goal for the end of the school year, the last map, is to have 60% of our students to meet typical growth on MAP. And as of right now, we set a target for the second quarter of 40%, and we're at 42%. So, we're super excited to see that our students are showing growth, that typical growth as MAP references it. For our third goal, we talked about student-led conferences. This is something we started pre-COVID that we're real proud of at Jordan Hill, and it's so different than just your regular teacher conference where the teacher and the parents just meeting and talking about the student performance. What happens in a student-led conference is the parent walks in and the student literally does what it says, they lead the conference, and they talk to their parents about what their goals are, where they're at in their progress, and what progress that they're making, and it is a beautiful thing to see. I have had kindergarten parents walk out going, "My five-year-old just told me what they're learning, what their goal is, and how they're doing it." That's a great thing to see. So, our initial baseline data, the reason you don't have any colors up there yet, is that we had 45 parents, so at our next one, which will occur in March, we're hoping to grow that by 10%, and we believe that we will do that, because the parents were super excited about that. And then this is the big hitter, what we're all here for in the school system is our student achievement. So, we have some things to celebrate here. If you look at those top three, at Jordan Hill, the percent of third, fourth, and fifth grade students reaching the midpoint of their stretch band for reading, we met that goal in all three areas. That's super exciting. So, I'm proud of the school and for Jordan Hill, because our staff has worked really hard to help our students to grow in reading. One of the things, though, that this does, yes, thank you. One of the things that this does, though, this balance scorecard, it helps me as a leader to reflect on my practice and then to work with my admin team to reflect on our practices together and how we're supporting instruction. So, you'll see our yellow, we just put in the yellow Orton Gillingham, meaning we haven't met that goal, it hasn't declined, but we're not quite where we want to be with that. So, I can tell you what happened last year as a district. We looked at the grade level that was struggling the most, and we went in and we supported that grade level, and we saw huge growth in that specific grade level. So, that's what my admin team and I met literally today and said, "Okay, this is the grade level, we're about the target, this is how we will go in, this is how we will support that instruction." Because at the end of the day, this is more than just numbers, because we're talking about students, and we're talking about students being successful. So, what I have to remind myself, because you can get caught up in the data, is I need for students to be successful. That's what we want in the school system and for all of our students. And so, when they're not, what can we do to help fix that? And I can't point to anything else except I'm the captain of this ship, I got to make sure I'm steering it in the right direction, and that's what this scorecard is about, is helping me to focus and help my people to support them so that they can be successful. So, if you'll look at the last one, the last slide, you're going to see that red color that we don't particularly care for, and this is our math. And so, what you're going to see here is we did not meet our goal, the percent of students proficient and distinguished in math as measured by MAP. So, what did this performance review and this reflection say to me? It said, "You know what, this is an area we have to work on." So, what are we doing right now? Me and my admin team, we sat down, we're listing students. Something Ms. Jewell, the executive officer of elementary, says all the time, drill it down to the students. So, we literally are making a list of the students. We're looking for ways that we're going to go in, we're going to support the teacher, we're going to support the small group instruction, we're going to support those students and measure each week how those students are performing, because we want them to be successful on the next map as well as milestones in preparation. What might we do? We're looking at problem-solving, we're ensuring that the lessons are rigorous, but we're also saying, what can we do to help support? This is not a teacher needs to do better or students need to do better, it's what can we do to help grow our students as learners? And then the last thing you'll see is about the walkthroughs. You heard Dr. Taylor mention about the walkthroughs that we're doing earlier. Now, what I can point to first that we're super proud of, if that bottom one, you see the percent of lessons with high-quality text as measured by the tool, obviously, we know that's working, because we saw on the other page the reading growth that we had, so that's great. When we looked at the other two as a team, we talked about, we know that a lot of this stuff is happening, so we had to, you know, back up and punt, if you will, and so, we're now doing calibration walks and realize that not all of it is not that we haven't seen it, maybe it's just how we scored it. So, that's helped us as a team to talk about when we're going in walkthroughs, what we're looking for, making sure we're scoring it correctly, so that we're getting a true picture of what's happening in our school. But that is basically the overview of the process of how we use the balance scorecard at Jordan Hill.
All right, let's give Ms. English a hand for the tremendous growth at Jordan Hill. And so, just as we wrap up, we wanted to really just come and provide for you just what is that process? How does, you know, the district office, how do our teams at district office work with the schools in support of them so that we can meet our vision and mission? And so, I've just listed a couple of supports here, I will not go through them all, but, you know, I think this is a proud point. It should be, you know, for this entire board and for everyone here, when you have a principal who comes and really knows about the progress of her school and can speak very intently and focused about the improvements that are happening for her scholars. So, that concludes our Teacher and Leader Effectiveness presentation.
Thank you so much, Dr. Taylor. Looks like you are up again. Mama, there goes that woman again.
Okay, and so, I am speaking this time on behalf of Dr. Greer. She would have presented here tonight, and, you know, prayers are with her as she is on bereavement leave. So, I'll go ahead through the opening slides, as I have already done that, but I wanted to make sure that I provided some updates, board members, for you, because in the subsequent months, we will be coming back with some budget requests around these items. So, we wanted to talk to you about our resource adoption timeline that we're currently in the midst of, and then I want to talk to you just a little bit about the new math standards. And so, we know that our policy, IFAA, governs for us how we adopt instructional materials. This was a policy that we did put in place last year. It replaced the old curriculum audit policy that we had. And so, this policy really just outlines for us the guidance and the process that we will use for putting quality resources and materials in the classroom. And so, what we feel is that we no longer can just depend on teacher-created material, that it is not timeless. When we try to put together teacher-created material, there are links that break, there are things that become outdated, and we really felt the need that our scholars needed just strong material that they would have access to in every classroom. And so, the timeline here, we did begin in September with just the launch of the adoption. We have ran all of the vendors by Ed Reports, you have a link attached there. Ed Reports is really a research-based engine that lets us know that it has been materials that have been vetted, and these are materials that are deemed of high quality. And so, we started with that, because we know that our scholars deserve to have the best quality of materials in every classroom. And so, November to December, we went about this process of having task force and committees to be able to come in and look at the rubrics, where we decided what were quality pieces that we wanted to see in curriculum. And so, then we set up sites for public review and comments. And so, if you, board members, would like to take part in this process, I will make sure that I get for you the location so that you can go and take part in this process, so that you can give your input in terms of what material we may end up selecting. I will pause and say that just because you do a review process, that doesn't mean that you adopt immediately. We know that we have new language arts standards that are coming out. So, what we may find is that we have some material that may, you know, we may like that material, but it may need a little bit more time for us to see what the state does with the standards. However, the flip side of that is that we don't have time to wait to improve instruction and the quality of our resources as the state, you know, year to year makes these changes. And so, we do have an opportunity to adopt some digital resources, because if those are updated based upon the new standards, we have access to the digital. So, we're just in that process to really determine which direction we need to go. So, January to February, as stated, we do have those language arts and science materials on review, and we do encourage the board and anyone in the audience to take part in this review. And so, by March, I will bring to you a recommendation, and this will be after Dr. Greer and her team collects all of the evaluations, all of the rubrics, we will look at which material we feel would be the best for our scholars, and then we will put together a budget proposal for purchase, or not. We may delay it, but we would have the necessary information to make that decision prior to March. Then we would go about the April to July months. Once we receive those documents, those material, we would have to train our teachers on how to appropriately implement that into their classroom. We had some science presentations going on today, and the teachers were really excited that they would have access, first, the teacher, the parents, and the students would have access to a text, be it print or digital, so that they could communicate to families what the learning targets and outcomes were. So, they were really excited about some of the material that they saw today, and we look forward to doing the same thing for language arts. I'll close out with just making sure that we are aware that we do have new Georgia math standards, and next year is the implementation year. The good thing about the math standards from everything that we have seen is that you're taking 40, 50, 60 standards in a grade, and now, no grade level has any more than 10 to 12 standards. And so, it went through an extensive process at the state level, parents around the state were able to give input, and the main thing is that parents said, "I want to be able to take part in my kid's educational process. Give us some standards that I can help my kid with at home." As a result of that, those standards have been reduced down to a manageable amount of standards. That's the big deal. And then the second piece is that we want to make sure that everyone is aware that it is not a Griffin Spalding thing, but based upon the new standards, there will not be what used to be called accelerated math, that is being taken out of the curriculum. In other words, when kids get to sixth grade, they used to take part of sixth grade and part of seventh grade, and seventh grade, part of seventh grade, part of eighth grade, eighth grade algebra. They no longer will have that trajectory, and we're trying to get the message out to parents that that does not mean that your gifted and honors kid will not have a gifted and honors class. That is not what that means. It means that we will no longer offer accelerated, because it is no longer an available course. Okay? That is a big communication piece, and we had a parent meeting today, only about 11 parents participated, but we'll continue to have those meetings to make sure that parents understands that. We look forward to, once these standards are completely rolled out, we will continue with our implementation plan for training. We are told that the state will provide some digital resources and books and things of that nature, so there is not a need for, you know, textbooks or resources by way of a textbook for math, but we will focus our time and energy on professional learning and manipulatives for our teachers in the classroom. That concludes this presentation, and I will entertain as many questions as I can answer without Dr. Greer.
All right, thank you so much, Dr. Taylor, for the presentation. Members of this body, do we have any questions or concerns for Dr. Taylor? Doss? No? Holmes? None? Ms. McDonald?
No, sir.
Thank you so much, Dr. Taylor. All right. FY24 Budget Outlook, coming from Money Bag Yo, the coin getter himself, Mr. Byron Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're going to give you a snapshot tonight, as we shared a calendar with you last month of ongoing discussion that we'll have, so tonight, I wanted to share some data. You may have heard some of this a year ago and what our chronological order is, but I'll share that with you here tonight. So, our goal is to communicate effectively here out of our three non-negotiables, so that you have a better understanding of what our timeline is moving forward. And we hope by our budget outlook, we will strengthen our vision and mission statement, which ultimately empowers each student to graduate college and career-ready. On the roadmap to success, our goal bottom left, aligning our resources to student and staff needs, is always paramount in everything and every decision that the superintendent recommends to you all as a board. If you'll remember, our strategic plan talks about our beliefs, which are embedded in the roadmap to success, so student achievement, family and community engagement, high-performing staff, organizational and operational efficiency. And we had a big push and discussion about this last year, which will fast-forward into this year, which will be the basis of a lot of the decisions and items that we'll recommend in the coming months for budget adoption. To give you a little snapshot again of what the schools and the departments have been receiving from a collaborative effort here in the district. So, our normal process for giving schools personnel and operating allotments was provided on February 1st. That is about a week earlier than last year. We tried to time that with a job fair that was scheduled, I think it was Saturday, last Saturday, the 4th, so that was strategic in trying to get that information to them ahead of time. I want to also compliment Dr. Taylor's Teacher and Leader Effectiveness staff and Ms. Austin, Barbara Austin, and Mr. Charles Kelly. We had a very concise format that was emailed out to all the principals. They didn't get three to four different types of information in three to four emails that they had to keep up with. All of us collaborated and had pretty much everything in one spreadsheet-type format that I think was well-received, at least for the feedback that I've received so far. So, they got that information on February 1st. Those items, we'll have about four weeks to turn that in on, or about February 28th. If any school, they've already been told, if they need a few-day extension, that's fine, just reach out to us in writing, and we'll look at that for them. The personnel allotments, again, are based on what we call a resource allocation method ramp formula, which looks at how we allocate to each school based on what the state says they are earning. they are earning. We look at some economically disadvantaged data along with free and reduced lunch, gifted, all that kind of stuff in there together to come up with a model number of personnel allotments. I did want to make one comment down on the reminder for general fund sped where I talked about where we consolidated all of that data together. Some of the trends that we're seeing in our data right now is we're not losing as much FTE that we've lost the last couple of years in just a general number, but we're not gaining either. The general allotments in general are staying about the same. We may be losing in the way we're earning, like EIP sources, et cetera, the way we're having to count those children. But the special education, we're seeing a rise in those amount of kids being identified in special education. So, I want to be strategic when I'm talking to you about allotments. We're seeing some trend data in both of those areas, and we had a big meeting to talk about that today. So, you hear more about that here in the future. Budget meetings for the schools have already been out there. Dr. Taylor's office has already given the schools, I believe, a time to sign up for those. They'll be March 13th, 15th, 21st, and 23rd. We're going to build on a process that we did with school improvement last year. Yes, sir?
Jones, can you answer Leader Holmes' question?
I'm sorry. Bottom of Slide 6 will be March 13th, 15th, 21st, 23rd. Slide number seven just kind of gives you a snapshot of what we'll expect to hear in that meeting on that date for the principal to talk about the state of their school, really how the resources are aligned to their school improvement plan. I will applaud what I witnessed last year. I think we build on that. We're asking the schools to really talk about if they really can measure the effectiveness of some expenditure in the prior year, and does it need to be continued into the future? So, we'll get into that in their meeting. And then, there's some forms that they'll need to fill out for compliance purposes with Ms. Austin's office, how we have to track our consolidated budget approach down here at the bottom, that they'll, they've been asked to do this in the past. For the departments, we actually sent those out on January 27th. That went out at the beginning of March last year. So, we're over a month ahead of time on getting that out to the department so we can go ahead and be looking at that data. Those will also be due back by February 28th with a meeting to be scheduled. I haven't named that date yet. It'll be sometime on or about middle of March coinciding with the school meetings. And again, these are being handled at this time because our goal is to get you all the budget book presentation before spring break. So, we want to have all this done ahead of time so we have time to digest it, et cetera, to get it in written form for you. Some of these items are recurring, but I wanted to just talk about them for a few seconds, items to consider. FTE enrollment decreases. I've mentioned that already. Just keep in mind, if, just from a general earnings standpoint, a child costs us or gains us $5,000 or so for every FTE we gain or lose. If it's a special education allotment, you could be talking $10,000 to $12,000 to $16,000, depending on the severity of the child. Then, we have to staff those classes accordingly. So, FTE can vary from any of those variables. We are looking at enrollments or FTE from the October date. I've noticed that normally, the October counts are higher than on in the spring. So, we are looking at that, and we are also looking at January plus pre and post tornado, which is the second bullet, to just identify any swings in that information, both from an ongoing operations, which could affect departments, maintenance, et cetera, what resources, transportation. Does transportation have to go and get childs that have been displaced in a different area than they would have been planned? There's a lot of factors that go into that. The legislative session, I think yesterday was day number 13. So, they have 40 days. They've got 27 to go. The big item so far, the governor's recommended budget does have a teacher's salary go increase. I believe it's $2,000. But just to repeat how that works, the House has to give their version of that. The Senate gives their version. They reconcile, and then, they give it to the governor to sign or not sign. So, we'll see how that plays out. But this would be the second year in a row that something like that has been proposed. We are in the second year of the GSAS strategic plan. Again, as I said earlier, we'll build on that in terms of the superintendent's directives or any initiatives he wants to support and recommend to the board. Inflation, again, we talked about this on how that's affecting people personally. It also is affecting us as a school system. Longevity steps for employees. We always annually come in and ask you all to support a step increase for those people eligible on the GSAS salary scale. So, that'll be a component of the discussion. The budget for the state, if you have not heard about this yet, there is going to be a proposed state health benefit plan increase. We're talking about the board match portion, not the individual. Right now, it's $945 per person. If you choose the health insurance, they're proposing for it to go over $1,500 a month. So, that's about $550 to $600 increase per person per month. That could be millions of dollars. So, let me give you a little bit of a nugget if you didn't know this. Normally, the employees funded from the state, the certified employees, we get a contribution from the state, and then, we turn around and give it to Department of Community Health, which is kind of intermediary in that we get it and give it back in. For any classified employees, we don't receive any funding for classified insurance. So, they are also right now $945, possibly going to the $1,500. And so, that will be a straight expense to the school board. The reason I'm being specific but vague is right now, there are some discussions of this having an impact in the year we're in right now, like retroing it to January with our amended FY23 budget. Then, there's a proposal that it becomes effective for certified July 1 forward for a whole year. And then, is it, I'm going to go, the third part of this is the classified might be effective January 1. So, this is all over the place right now. So, once they reconcile all those discussions with the governor's office, then we'll be able to give you a good proposal for that. But just keep that in mind, that will have a major impact for the non-funded positions. And as a reminder, our principal assistants, principal salaries in a few central office positions for two years, we've been able to pay those out of our ESER II funds to the tune of about $12 million to $13 million. Those have to come back in next year because we will have expended the ESER II grant. So, we've been planning. We've been talking about that for a couple of years. I just wanted to remind you all of that when we're putting the proposal together. And just a little bit more concise budget calendar, not by date, but by month only. We'll come back in March and give you a little bit more of this detail, but some more specific stuff directed from the superintendent on the budgetary overview and more on the priorities. We'll also give you a budget notebook. April, again, is, should be two public hearings, present and adopt the tentative budget. May, our goal is to host the final public hearing, present and adopt the final budget. And then, mileage hearings if necessary, June, July, not on into August, September, if we can, if we have a chance to control that with the commissioner's office. That concludes my presentation. Is there any questions at this time?
You've heard the presentation. Are there any questions at this time?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I exercise my opportunity to just ask a question of Mr. Jones about the budget process. I know we're going out to the middle part of March where these principals will be coming in. And you know, in my over 20 years of being on the board, I've never really, I guess the invitation never had been put out there or anything of that nature. But I've never really seen the nuts and bolts of how we get to the numbers that presented to the board to approve. And you know, and I've had this thought for a while, you know, we're asked to approve something that we really don't know how we got there. And I've always been a little uncomfortable with that. But I want to ask, how do we get to these numbers? And I know we're in that third year of the ESER funds, so they're going away, and we're going to have to make up for those, for lack of a better terminology to put that in. How are these principals given the autonomy to meet their goals when they are either asked or given a number that they must, they must reach? Are they able to drive that, how they're going to get to that number? Or is that dictated from the top down to the principals on how they're going to get to that number? You understand what I'm asking?
I'm happy to answer that. I'm going to delegate to the superintendent for a second, then I'll come back to you if I need to.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Lonnie, if you'll get me back to Mrs. English's presentation, I think it'll help me to best illustrate for Mr. Holmes and the other board members how principals get to a point of articulating what their needs are. You'll just take me to any one point in the balance scorecard. It doesn't really matter which goal area. So, Mr. Holmes, thank you for that question. And basically, as I indicated, I think maybe a work session back. The schools at that level work with their administrative staff as well as their certified and classified staff, and they identify the needs that they have at the school. So, if you look at this one with regards to organizational operational efficiency, there are going to be some action steps associated with these goals. Those action steps, while we can't see them at the moment, some of them will be for free, at no cost to the school or the district. Others may have a cost, whether it be for implementation, whether it be the purchase of a program, staffing, what have you. Taking all of those jigsaws of the puzzle, and what you're trying to do is stay within what Mr. Jones is going to share with you. Each year, we have a number that we believe is a threshold that we can effectively and successfully operate the district from the business side. So, that's the larger number. You've heard me talk about good, better, or best. And in some ways, it really depends on whether you are willing to go into your coffers, into your reserves, or stay out of that. That's part of it. So, in this instance, what Mrs. English likely did is identified whatever needs that she may have, and then, she presented that, much like she had this presentation. She presented for this goal, we're going to take this action. This action has a cost of this amount. Some of that, they're already earning simply by enrollment. Some of that, they may not. And so, we have various ways of funding, whether it be through federal programs, whether it be through ESER, or whether it be through the coffers, if you would. But you take that 20 times over because every school has that same autonomy and flexibility to at least articulate what you desire to do and how you will do that. What we then do is use this process to determine if what she thought she was going to do is being done so that we can determine if the value or the investment is a good one. Does that make sense? Going back to the ultimate culmination of all of that, it gets back to what can the district afford to do and what can it not afford to do? And to what degree are we willing to say to Dottie, despite what you desire is to be the best interest of Jordan Hill, we cannot do this, much like you would at your home budget? You may have a desire to, you know, paint the living room. You want it painted. You want it a certain color, but you have no means to pay for it. Or you don't want to pay as much as that color you desire. So, you go, you get it painted, but not the color you want, maybe not the level of paint. Same concept, same process. I appreciate the question. I don't want to put Ms. English on the spot, but what I'll share with you, the district flows from the school outward, not from the district office the other way. That's just not how it works. We can go deep into the coffers and worry about furloughs and some other stuff later, or we can try and position ourselves to get to a point where we know that we'll be able to pay bills and pay people and still enable schools to move forward. That's the process. Consider a thousand jigsaw puzzles, pieces. And the process that Mr. Jones is talking to you about is how do we want this puzzle to look at the end? Is it something that we're willing to be able to put on display that others can say, "I like the way that looks"? Or is it just still what I'm going to call a mess because it's just going through the motions?
I got maybe two more questions. And the reason I'm asking this is because I really don't know. And I like, you know, I'm a, I'm kind of a numbers geek, and I like to understand how we got there. Because I'm used to, in the budget process I've been involved in, I've been given a number that I need to meet. However creatively I get there, that's up to me. And the reason I'm asking this is because I know we got to, we got to deal with a real number since the ESER, I call it that pie in the sky, you know, is going away. So, we got to, we got to get to some real numbers. So, with staffing, what's the latitude that a principal has on meeting their need? Because that's what, that's what they're trying to do, meet the needs of the scholars with the staffing that they have. How are they able to, I guess, manipulate their dollars as far as positions or staffing that they need? How does that work?
Yes, sir. So, two years back, Mr. Jones and I created what I'm going to call an awardance based on, you know, what we dealt or what we perceive to be a surplus. So, how do we take what we believe will be an additional amount of money, give it back to schools so that they can use it, as you said, as they see fit? In most cases, what's most expensive are people. And in some ways, what we will do is find ways to afford them people. Where it gets hairy is it's not a whole person, half a person, half allotment, three-quarters of allotment, or something to that effect. But it really gets back down to, is this a necessity to be able to move a school forward? Or is this about the principal's preference to do it a certain way? The principal will still have the opportunity to articulate that. That also happens at the department head as well. For example, I spent an hour with the head of our special education department, who's advocating for principals in ways that they're not yet familiar with because he's looking at it at 30,000 feet. Dottie's on the ground. And so, the burdens that she will experience will also be experienced by Mr. Kelly at a different level months in advance. So, the conversation that Mr. Jones and myself and Mrs. Battle, that we get all year long is trying to manage, one, that number that you indicated so that it doesn't have a ripple effect after the fact, that we're not now, we're now at a point where we're telling principals, "You have to cut your budget." I'm glad and pleased to say that since I've been here, and I don't think it's happened in recent years, that principals have been told, "You need to plan a budget and reduce it by a percentage." So, that's part of why you have a stance in which you stay with that number. But when Dottie says, "This is what I'm trying to do. This is how I'll know that it's effective, and this is what I'm wanting to hear, the cost." How many of those additional costs will we be able to keep up with before I come back to you and say, "We're about to cut staff. We're about to cut school days. We're about to cut programs because principals needed something." So, it's really just a balancing act, but at some point in time, you're going to have to make that kind of decision. Because what I'll share with you, as you well know, we have a lot of adults in Griffin Spalding, but we have a declining in enrollment. And the only way that school districts generate revenue are children being enrolled. The burden that this district has is that we have what I still call a diversity of adversity. We have a smaller set of enrollment with a larger set of needs. So, right now, I know that Board Member McDonald will say, at the top of her mind, "How can we help students with mental health?" You know, Board Member Brown will say, "How can we help students with literacy and numeracy?" You may be thinking, "How can we help students with character ed?" All three of those programs have a different cost. And the question is, which is most important? Or how will we afford the three of them? Or maybe two this year, one next year, one this year, two next year? All of that is that. But we do have that number. That's what Byron shares with you all at the beginning, and then, what we often talk about, that's why we let you bring into the fold, what is your desire? Because ultimately, before I can recommend a budget to you, it needs to be inclusive of your desire, Dottie's desire, Charles's desire, Chris's desire, Tiffany's desire, Judy's desire, his desire, his desire. That's where those puzzle pieces are. And there are times where some of them will be told, "I can't do that for the good of the district." But what we strive to do is, "I can do all of that, maybe not to the level you desire." Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah. One, one last question. I don't know how the other board members feel, but this is, this is my thought press or process as to how I want to proceed as being a more supportive board member for the schools in my district. Not that I don't care about all schools, but, you know, I have four schools in my district, and I would like to get a schedule, if, if it's to the board's approval and your approval. I would like to get a schedule of when the four schools in my district are meeting with, in the budget process, because I would like to, I would like to get a firsthand view, because as you just said, you see stuff at different levels. You know, someone at a 30-foot level, they're not going to see the same thing as somebody at a five-foot. That, that just, that's just the nature of the beast. But I would like to at least get a bird's eye view of what the principals of the schools in my district, what they're, what they're going through, or what they're presenting, and what they're having to work with, within their budget. Because the reason I ask that is because, not some, I was going to say sometimes, but we, we as a community, we as a community, we've got to get more involved with our schools. School system can't do it all. And, and one thing that I pledge to myself to do for the principals in my district is I, I'm going to be beating the bush to find proprietors, individuals, churches, or whatever, to fill that gap, to help them offer the services that they deem important to their scholars. Because we can't do it all.
Right.
We, we, it just, it just impossible. But with community involvement, which we have been struggling with ever since I've been on this board, that's always been a high priority issue everywhere you go, community involvement. But this community, as much as they do during the beginning of the school, much as they give, we, 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 we have to step it up and do that throughout the school year, not just, you know, once a year.
Yes, sir.
And so that, that's why I'm asking these questions, and that's why I want to be able to get involved somewhere, you know, it, it might be something that a principal is trying to do, that some church or someone would be able to fund.
Right.
And I want to know what those things are, so that I can do my due diligence a, as a school board member.
Yes, sir.
Try to help them resolve those issues.
So what, what we will do, we, we typically has, as Mr. Jones indicated, we, we will bring schools and departments in and let them articulate their needs. Harper, take me back to slide two, maybe three. What I'll share with you is the value of having guidance and parameters. So what the roadmap does, slide three, Harper, four, I'm sorry. So what the roadmap does, Mr. Holmes, board members, those who are listening online, there, as you indicated at the beginning, what's the level of autonomy that principals have? And what I will share, called, under the blue skies, I don't care what she does, as long as she stays on that map.
As long as what?
As long as she stays on that map. As I, as I shared with you when I met you, there's more than one way to get from here to there.
Exactly.
What the map does is it helps Ms. English recognize that she has to, she has to speak to who's leading, who's teaching, who's learning, what they're learning. Because her green may be red at another school, and her red may be green at another school. But that map allows her and 19 other schools and programs to move in the same direction the way that they see fit for their school. What the district does is it has, as you had Dr. Taylor say, a larger perspective. So of the 1,700 classrooms that have been visited, we recognize that in 94% of those, things are happening the way that we envisioned them to happen. What we did not say is you have to, Ms. English, do it this way, and you have to, Ms. Douglas, do it that way. What we said is, this is what we believe our students collectively need. The value in that, and the reason that I'm saying that, is because Ms. English will tell you, she may have a first grader today who may be at Moreland tomorrow, and it's not fair to that kid to have to figure out how school feels because their family moved within one facet of the community. That's why that map is there. We'll make sure that all of you have access to those budget hearings, so that you can understand how principals are articulating what they're striving to do relative to what's blue, what's green, what's gray, and those three pillars. You'll be able to figure out, when does it become the issue of the district as opposed to the desire of the school? So, so that's what the budget does. When we recognize that Dottie has had to sacrifice to make something good happen at Jordan Hill, maybe it's now time for the district to make that a district-wide process. And we, and we've done that over the last two and a half years, and I believe the district has done that when I was a principal as well. But that takes some research, and it takes the opportunity to recognize what the staff will tell you. I don't operate well with contingencies, because contingencies can fluctuate. If, if this has to happen in order for that to happen, we may not be able to control both. So that, that's where the research, and that's where, where we, I, I don't like to pilot, I say prototype. But that's where those things come into place. But we'll make sure that all of you have access to when, when schools are scheduled. I would encourage you to go to more than just what's in your district, so that you can, you can see why it may look differently. You know, because a third grade kid is a third grade kid. But the needs are going to vary from school to school, and, and I don't want you to miss what another school is doing, because they may not be in your, your district. I want you to be able to go to a church who may be in your district and share with them something that's happening in another district, to see if they have an interest in supporting that as well. But we'll make sure you get that information.
Well, I, I say it, my district.
I understand.
I know, I know Mr. Brown is going to take care of the rest.
But I, I do appreciate the questions, Mrs. English. I hope I didn't speak out of turn by speaking for you, but I, I do believe that if you were to call a principal and ask them, to what degree are you able to articulate what you need, that, that's where it starts. I'm not driving Jordan Hill. I'm driving the district at large. I'm looking to her, and I, I've said that to her individually, one-on-one. I, I, I have no qualms. I believe in what she's doing. If I didn't, she wouldn't be doing it. And, and so what we strive to do is make sure that as best we can, we can give her the, the resources to do what she believes in the best interest of her school and all of her colleagues. That, that's just how it works. What I'm, what I'm hearing is that maybe you all didn't have insight into the intricacies of that. We can, we can take care of that. That's, that's easy.
And, and, and I hope no one takes what I said out of content. It wasn't that we were told we couldn't.
Right.
It just wasn't, I guess, the opportunity of, that wasn't made clear that you can't. See what I'm saying? So I don't want anyone to say, ah, he talking about? No, I'm not, I'm not rolling anybody on the bus. I, I just know in the past, we've never gotten involved at that level. And, and I, you know, for one, I, I, I just, that's just my forte, that's just something I enjoy doing. And, and, and I, I really want to be able to help principals, because there may be, it, it's not always big dollars.
Right.
You, you know, I don't mean to be long-winded, but I, I had a person at one school, and, and they were, they were asking me, you know, I don't know why the school couldn't buy, you know, whatever wanted to buy. And some doggone $10 extension cards. I went out, you know, and bought them, and, and took them to them, and they, it was like they hit the lottery. It could be something just that simple, that they, that they may not get included in their budget, but someone else could be there, come do it to make sure they get it.
I, I think, when I joined the board, elected in 2018, and took office in 2019, and at that time, Will Dawson was chair, and I, I asked that same question. At that time, the superintendent and the chair did not think it was important for board members to be a part of that process. Because how are we to balance and pass a budget when not knowing the intricate details of what principals are going through? So, four years later, five years later, it is good that we are moving towards that. And so, thank you so much for your vision and your leadership, and we're looking forward to making sure that all of our schools have the necessary resources, and the board understands from the top to the bottom what is going on and how we can best support principals in, in their instructional leadership. So, very excited. Ms. McDonald?
Yes, and thank you, Dr. Simmons, for your remarks, and Mr. Holmes, for your questions. I just want to remind this body that when Mr. Brown and I did take, were elected in our first terms, one thing that I remember us all agreeing to is that you can't teach, you can't treat school A like school B. You know, the cookie cutter has got to go. What Dottie needs, Dottie needs. What Josh, what McGavin needs, McGavin needs, for his, for his clientele, and we have to keep that in mind as we go through this process. I look forward to going to the meetings, because I'm sure that will be a huge learning curve for all of us with regard to what Mr. Brown just said, and what Mr. Holmes just said, and, because everybody's different. That's it. We have to keep that in mind.
No tea, no shade. Anything, Mr. Dawson?
Yeah, Mr. J, I have a question. It's kind of changing the subject, but it was on, on your talk, the state health benefit plan increases. When will we know more about that? And, once those are put out there, are those, we have to comply? Do we have any kind of leeway? Because we're talking significant dollars.
So, too, let me go back. I'm, I'm not sure if I said this, so the amended FY23 budget, we're in FY23, they'll, they'll do their mid-year budget and pass it. Not to be confused with this is FY24, we've been talking about. They're proposing to make the certified employees go, go up immediately back to January, like last month, which would mean we would, we would have six months of that in this year that we did not budget. The only caveat is they do fund most of the certified increase, they don't fund any of the classified. There are some offsets. If somebody's not on the CPI report, we hire people after that, and we're paying for them, we'll get the money in the prior, in the next year, the way the accounts work. It never works out dollar for dollar. So that's an immediate issue right now. We won't know till the governor signs the amended budget, in up to 40 days. We're on day 13, day 14 now, I think it is. The FY24, obviously, again, up to 40 days. The, the language right now is to continue the certified into a full year of the budget, and then implement classified January 1, so then there'd be six months of that January 1 next year. There, the, the way this works, there's all, there's another senator or House representative member that's proposing to phase that in, that piece in over three years. So, I mean, it's all, it's every day we finding out something different, as they meet in committee and talk about that kind of stuff. That's the candidness I can give you right now, so.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. I really appreciate us having this conversation. Thank you, Lita Holmes, for that question. All right, we are still with Money Bag Yo himself, going to the ERP presentation.
All right. All right, board members, good evening again. This presentation has been kind of a long time coming. I want to remind you of a couple things as I start this presentation. I went and looked back at our FY23 good, better, best, the, the blue charts that we've been working with you all for the last couple of years, and we do have this item on there up to about 1.5 million. So we did approve that as a goal for this coming year. Another good piece of that, which is in the last slide I'll show you, is that's approved for our American Rescue Plan, ESER funds, not general fund, so we're not going to bear that expense in year one out of the general fund. That's all good news. It makes this decision a lot more palatable if you were having to do it out of general fund dollars. So, as we start the presentation, again, communicating effectively here and being accountable for the reasons that we would want to recommend this purchase. And again, our goal is to bring a recommendation to you at the Board of Education meeting the next meeting. This is just a presentation on the process tonight. So we're looking forward to a re, recommendation then. We do think that recommending a purchase of this magnitude would strengthen our vision and, and definitely increase our mission statement, the way we're able to collaborate with people and stakeholders moving forward. And on our roadmap to success, which we have been talking about a lot tonight, we are always in this process aligning resources, but over to the far right, we're actually trying to recommend a, a better cohesive system, which would obviously have more of an innovative practice in what we're doing. So first, just to make sure that everybody understands what that acronym ERP system, enterprise resource planning, for lack of a better word, the Macalier accounting software that the people, the board members that have been here for a while, this is what the school district has used, I'm going to say for 20-plus years, maybe longer than that. I believe there's about 15 districts out of the 188 in the state that use it. The majority of the state uses the, the free software from the state still, probably about 80, 80 districts, but they don't have enhancements and stuff like that. They don't always upgrade that software like some of the other proprietary systems do. A new ERP system, and these are some of the modules that I'll list, and I want to just start by saying that this is a needed item for our district. If it's nothing more than increasing our functionality, increasing our collaboration with folks, departments talking to each other, things becoming paperless, all of those things that really, if you go outside of Griffin Spalding, a lot of our peers have already moved to that. We can point to, to, to places where we've done a good job with that, but we're kind of handicapped to a certain point with what we've got right now. So, some of the modules, financial management and accounting, obviously our accounts payable and purchasing, you know, we, we are, we would be able to move to a, if something shut down with COVID again, and we had to work from home, just an example, as long as somebody had a browser technology, we could process purchase orders from home. Some of this technology would allow business work rules to be written, to where a bookkeeper would put in a requisition, the principal would approve with a button, it would come up to my office, we would approve, it would email the, the requisition and PO back to school, and it would email to the vendor. So it takes, it takes a lot of that paper out of it. Right now, we're still doing some pieces of that electronic, but not, not all. Payroll with self-service, we currently have a module of that, but we can severely enhance that with, with another purchase. Our local school accounts, if you all know when I say LSA, it's like the local checkbook that each school can do for fundraising. We want to put that on one centralized module, so that everybody's on the same thing, not a, not a QuickBooks at this campus and a Macalier at this campus. They have some autonomy in that right now, but it's hard to keep up. They need to be on one system, and that's the norm, that everybody's on the same system. This would allow that. In our budgeting process, we, some of the things Dr. Simmons was talking about with, with coming to these meetings, will the department heads, et cetera, get information from my office via spreadsheet. And spreadsheet, spreadsheet emailing out is still better than handing them a piece of paper, but we can do more with a new system to where we could actually be moving, this is your current budget, you go in this column in the software, we can have three versions, we can approve this version, and then it'll upload in without going through all the spreadsheet and emailing, and did I get the email or not, and all that kind of stuff. So, anyway, all that goes into what we, what, the reason we would want to actually recommend a purchase of this nature. So again, as I said earlier, the official name is Next Generation, but, but it's actually Macalier is the, the system that we currently use. That, the parent company of that is Harris Solutions. Again, there's 15 of those in the state. Data reporting is another item that we've been working on. The Board of Education monthly reporting, we, when I first got here, we talked about possibly changing some of that to some different formats. We cut some things down, but we still giving you a lot of paper information. We think we can reformat some of that information where it could be produced out of the system versus having to run reports and hand key that, which is more data and labor that we're having to get into. Budget prep, I just mentioned that data analytics, analytics in general would be enhanced. Cloud-based, obviously, a lot of the companies that we're looking at now use like Amazon Web Service, et cetera, they don't have a server sitting up here in this office. We would be web-based for that, which would be a hosting environment. And like I said in the last bullet, they're cutting-edge technology databases, and really being progressively. I, I think we do do a good job sometimes of being progressive, but we can do so much more with a more, with a new I I think we do do a good job sometimes of being progressive, but we can do so much more with a more with a new system than we are right now. Uh, document imaging, first bullet on the next benefit slide. Uh, you know, right now, we we, in my office, we're making a copy of a check, putting it with a copy of an invoice, putting it with a copy of a PO, stapling it and putting it in a file cabinet. When auditors come in, they give us a sample, we pull that out, unbind. Or if or if they're remote, like Malden Jenkins will scan it. So, we gotta unbind, then scan, and then upload and then go. Here, I'm just telling you, this would be, uh, when you run copies of checks, it images the check in the system, it images the PO. Even research at the site level would be much easier. And we 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 understand that we would look at opening up access, more remote accesses to some of the folks at the schools. That will cut down on questions that they would have for HR and payroll. They would have more access to that at the site level. One of the things, uh, professional learning, some of the softwares offer a what you would call a university platform within their software. So, you can go in and assign modules and track training within the software, like on a PL day or anything. Like, for example, in my mid-year evaluations with my staff, I was talking to them about their professional learning needs. How do we do better to develop them? One of the things we would go in and say, here's some modules on this in this software. Let's go ahead and complete this within the next 45 days. We can track that. We can track how they sign in, sign out. And then that's ready for the next evaluation. I like the little phrase here, new system would integrate all employee data from hire to retire. So, it is sometimes, Ms. Battle's gonna laugh at me sitting over there. We we have really gotten to know each other well with our collaboration with our departments. It's, we are electronic, but we have a lot of paper passing back and forth. Uh, whether somebody hires, whether they retire, if they transfer, how does it get on to the board agenda in five different categories? It's, and there's a chance for mistakes in that. I mean, everybody's human. So, again, we think that would be improved. I just talked to you about our external audits on the second bullet, uh, budget modules. I mentioned that to you earlier. And our our annual comprehensive financial report, you know, which is the the 10-year statistical analysis that we do for our audit, that could be somewhat a little bit more automated with some modules that some companies own. We have to actually move 10 years of data around every year. We could formalize that and get that done a little bit earlier than we are now. Uh, again, the only the item on here, the second bullet, uh, I've worked in a system prior to coming in here where our travel reimbursement process was all online. We could embed travel rates into software and we can have people uploading their documents at the site level. We never have to touch a piece of paper. And it then it would download back to their, uh, direct deposit in their bank account. Uh, and I talked earlier about collaboration. I think that's really the biggest thing, is when superintendent asks for a question, you know, I we would have dashboards. We could go to that. We could set up functionality that we we have to go grind it out right now to find information. I think we give the right answer, but it's hard to get to it a little bit more. And then a lot of people here, we can approve POs on the telephone. We can set up mobile devices. If somebody needs something in an emergency boom, it can be, we could go to their phone for them to approve. And some people in the audience have worked in some of these softwares in other districts and they would nod to you if you talked about them versus compared to what we got right now. So, let me kind of end with this, next to the last slide. Um, we're actually planning on using a cooperative purchasing program. Uh, Mr. Holmes, I think a couple of years ago, you asked me about that, or maybe when we were when we were approving the budget analyst position, have we ever looked at that? Well, policy DJE purchasing, number five, letter B. DJE, number five, letter B, talks about statewide contracts. And then the last part of that talks about, or an approved cooperative purchasing program, which we are a member of, like Sourcewell, the third bullet, our our number is 11536. Some of these platforms I'm talking about have already been bid on a national level. So, we don't have to put out a formal RFP and go through all that stuff. We've got best pricing. Uh, so I want to just encourage you that our recommendation in two weeks, if we if we can get there, may include that. We have an approved board policy that allows that. So, just just keep that in mind. And last bullet, our American Rescue Plan, uh, Ms. Austin or not, we I think we've got 1.4, 1.5 million. It's approved at the state. It's not it's not a discussion. It's it's approved. So, if we decide to use this money for this purpose, it doesn't hit the general fund right now. It would it would in ongoing years, but not for the first year, year and a half, that type thing. So, with that, I'll take any questions. That might have been fast, but I was trying to give you as much as I could as quick as I could. So.
Just one quick one. Thank you. What would be the ongoing cost, like, a year if we purchase this?
You know, I've got to look at that with the the people that we would look at, uh, in the next couple of weeks. But, uh, some, let me give you a hypothetical. In the in the past, when people had servers located on their sites, you might spend a million, 1.2 million in one year and then an ongoing cost of 100. Now, a lot of companies have changed to where you don't have a million, two up front. You have 500 recurring or something like that. So, you pay for it over time. It's hard to answer that, but that's there's two, three different ways. That investment would be worth it. We would have to budget for it, to answer your direct question, ongoing, because it wouldn't be a care, uh, an ESER three allocation after next year and a half.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other questions, Mr. Dos?
And do we, what is our currently, the system we're using? Is there a cost involved in that?
About 60 grand a year.
Leader Holmes? Okay. All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Jones. All right, next up, our super superintendent, Dr. Keith Simmons, School Day Times Proposal 2023, 2024.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman Brown, members of the board. I just wanted to come to you quickly. Uh, I won't take up a lot of time. I shared with you back last semester that we would conduct some some public, um, interactions to kind of get the feel for where were we, uh, in terms of how we're able to provide the the pupil transportation service and and how that jives with what we're striving to do with getting school, getting students to school on time and getting them from school on time and safely. So, uh, I'm not going to, um, skip over these, but what I'll share with you, the bulk of this conversation is around just being accountable. Um, I I think I shared with you back in July, my dad taught me that accountability is when someone asks or tasks you to do something, you do it and then you go back and tell them that you've done it. And so, that's really what this conversation is about. We were tasked with communicating with stakeholders internally and externally, figuring out how our levels of service with regards to transportation have gone. What might we be able to do to better serve our students and families in that regard while still meeting the objectives of the schools and the school system? Wanted to let you know that we brought that process to a close. So, uh, obviously, with the mission and the vision to empower each student to graduate college and career-ready, uh, the distinctive brand, the strong leaders in the great schools. Uh, Mrs. McDonald mentioned earlier this evening, without our bus drivers, none of us wouldn't be here. This really isn't a matter of bus drivers as much as it is about our capacity and how we're using our bus drivers. The bus drivers and the buses, all of those things are working well, but the system is not giving us the the outcomes that we intended or desire. And so, that that's why we had to go back to the table. This is more about, are we willing to tolerate what we're getting? Or are we willing to do the things necessary to get what we what we want and what our students and what our schools deserve? So, with regards to the roadmap, what you're gonna find, that all of this conversation relative to the school day and the start time, bell time, however that's been phrased in your rep, in in your, uh, respective communities, this is about ensuring that we're able to do this, do the things that we say we do, do them efficiently and make sure that we can get students to school on time, get there safely, get them off of those campuses on time, get them home safely so that the families and and our staff can do the things that they're expected to do in the afternoon. Currently, what I want you to take from this slide, uh, is that basically, at the end of the day, what Mr. Harris would tell you is that ideally, a minimum of 45 minutes between runs is what's expected. It's what's needed, particularly from elementary to anything. Because in the event that there's a younger student who's not able to have a supervisor or guardianship at the stop when we drop them off, we have to bring that student back. So, so that's a prolonged amount of time. But if you simply look at our structure now, you're going to see at no point in the day are we able to meet the minimum that's expected and needed for us to run our pupil transportation program efficiently. And that really and truly is a problem of practice for us. So, the conversation was about how might we revisit when schools start, when they dismiss, so that we can get back to being able to create a system that enables us to run them efficiently and effectively. Here's the takeaway. What I want you to recognize is while we transport, uh, upwards of, eh, on any given day, Todd, 4,000, 5,000 students? Yes, sir. 6,000 students. So, what you're gonna see is that the number of students that we transport doesn't necessarily align with the number of people we were we were able to interface with. I don't believe that that necessarily means that people didn't care. It simply means that they didn't take advantage of the opportunities that we created. And so, you still have to be mindful that we we wanted to make sure that we created the opportunity for people to share with us their experience, share with us their opinion, share with us their feedback, so that we can take all of that information and come up with a solution that enables us to try and get to where we have a 45-minute window between runs. And when I say run, what I'm talking about is dismissing one band of schools to getting to another band of dismissed schools to another band of dismissed schools. Right now, it's 20, 20, and 30, I believe. The key points is we use Thought Exchange, which is an online platform. We were able to text that information out, able to allow people to, uh, you know, log on through web services or anything to that effect. We had in-person town halls. We had virtual town halls. We had, uh, Teachers of the Year who were who were serving as facilitators to get feedback from their staff. Uh, we shared that information with our district administrators, with our school-level administrators. Just wanting to make sure that we could be mindful and cognizant of everyone's experiences, but also their thoughts. What I'll share with you, tonight's conversation isn't about where we landed, because we're not finished. Uh, what what I wanted to do is two things. One, I wanted to share with you, we've made good on the commitment to go into the community, both public and internal, bring up this conversation with regards to, we recognize that we're not able to serve the way that we desire to serve. But we also recognize in order for us to change that, there will have to be some changes within the system. How might we take your experiences, your feedback and 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 create some of those changes so that we're not simply moving a problem from one side of the street to another side of the street? We were really trying to figure out, how can we come up with a solution that enables us to have that 45 minute, 45-minute window of time? We believe we have a decent solution. Um, we'll share that with you in the coming weeks. One of the things that we want to be able to do later this week is get back in front of the district administrators and the school-level principals, make sure that they have the opportunity to help us identify any blind spots. We think we've been able to create an opportunity to get to that 45-minute window, um, but we're not quite yet sure. And so, again, I'm not asking for a decision or anything like that. I just wanted you to understand, the staff hears you when it says you want us to be accountable. And and we shared with you that this was a process that we'd take on. We shared with you, we'd come back to you in February and give you a recommendation. Here we are at the first of the month. We're on schedule to do that at the second meeting, the business meeting this month. And I wanted both you as a board and the governance team, as well as our employees, our families, anyone who may be listening online, while that conversation may have begun to, uh, cool in temperature, that work has not ceased. It actually has come to an end and we're ready to give you all a decision. We'll be able to do that in the coming weeks. Happy to take any questions that you may have for me at this point.
Yes, I I got one. I I'm kind of surprised to hear that number. I I thought it would be higher of how many students we transport on our buses. Uh, I know, I know Mr. Harris probably already has an analogy of how the other students, how it how it breaks down. What's the next, is it car riders? Uh, what what's the? Yeah, yeah. I just I just thought that number would have been higher.
Let's go ahead.
Mine's not so much a question, but just to thank you for going to the depth that you did. I also wanted to thank the board members that were present at those, uh, meetings, um, for their, knowing that, according to how many participated, they not realize exactly how much it might affect them, but we realize how much this is going to affect our community. Uh, and we've gone to every length that we can to make that happen. Uh, and that we want to do the very best to be able to pro- provide that service that we realize that we're not being able to provide effectively. So, thank you.
All right. Ms. McDonald, anything?
Good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Simmons. All right, information items. Dr. Taylor, you have that, uh, paperwork for us. Uh, Dr. Taylor's gonna pass out the budget schedule to the board members so that you have a hard copy of it. Uh, mark your calendars accordingly and we will coordinate on, uh, which members will attend those sessions. Informational items, monthly facilities and maintenance report for December of 2022, construction renovation progress summary number 284, monthly facilities and maintenance report for January of 2023, and the construction renovation progress summary number 285. Thank you, Mr. Ballard, for those items. All right, moving along, item eight, board member comments. Uh, let's start with Mr. Holmes. Do you have any?
Uh, I I just want to once again thank everybody. We still in the midst of, uh, recuperating, uh, from the storm that we, uh, know there are still some families and people that are affected. Uh, I know we've been grinding for a while, but, you know, we're gonna be at this for for a while. I know Mr. Dos, he he's worked real close at the, uh, disaster center and and, uh, but I just wanted to thank everyone because this, what people don't realize, uh, this is a real stressful time. People are sensitive. I think I shared with the board members, uh, you know, what what's important to them may not be important to someone else. And when you don't show that it some type of interest, they get the feeling some some type of way. And we have to be real conscious about that because we don't know what people are actually going through. So, uh, I I just hope we, uh, continue to be attentive to the needs of our families and and scholars at our respected schools because we're we're gonna be in this thing for a while.
Thank you so much, Leader Holmes of the Thriving Third. All right, we're gonna pass it to the good Reverend from the Sacred Second, Vice Chairman Dos.
Um, just tagging on to what he just said, there are efforts that are still needed where there's volunteers that are needed. Uh, and as you look for those opportunities, I know that, uh, our donation center has been run primarily by City Church, even though many other churches got involved and many other volunteers got involved in helping their efforts. Uh, they are in need of a little bit of that work on Thursday of this week and Saturday of this week. So, uh, you can reach out to me. My, uh, email and phone number is on the website, uh, if you are interested in helping them.
Thank you so much, Vice Chairman Dos. All right, pass, representing the formidable fifth, Ms. McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Dr. Taylor, will these meetings be in this room, the small room? Okay, thank you.
Where are they gonna be?
Small boy room.
I just wanted to say, uh, you know, I've seen so much good in our community and it just makes makes my heart smile. We got a long way to go, but we're gonna get there. Um, we just gotta love each other and help each other. And, um, I'm a firm believer that good comes from bad. So, thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you so much. Uh, just want to say, uh, shout out to, it is Black History Month and I want to give a shout out to those folks who have served before me. So, if you see my shirt, I have all those members on this shirt. Mr. A.C. Touch Jones, Ms. Mary Stenson, Ben Jackson, Helen Bailey, Emma Jean Foster-Taylor, Otis Head, Oscar Stokes, Larry Mathis, Tangela Booker Fuller, Ronnie Lowe, Carol Harvey, Fanny Delaney, Zachary Holmes, and Mike Kendall and myself. And so, just want to give a shout out to all those who served before me and still serve, and thank you so much for your leadership. Want to say a big shout out to the Heel That Wheel. Uh, Fine Arts Day at Jordan Hill Elementary School was amazing. Shout out to Ms. Megan Lokey, Mrs. Megan Lokey, who is the, uh, music teacher there. Just an amazing job over 22 acts where, uh, from storytelling to, uh, banjo playing, lyin', and just everything that you can think about with fine arts was represented at Jordan Hill Elementary School. And so, uh, please, 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 Principal English, Mr. Lokey, uh, give our thanks to, uh, Mrs. Lokey for putting-